Good afternoon. I bring the Jackson Public School Board meeting to order. Greetings, students, faculty, teachers, principals, and all those that support JPS. We are very, very happy to say welcome back to school. Welcome back, parents, and welcome back supporters and stakeholders. We really appreciate all that have supported us, and we're looking for a fantastic year of major improvement for Jackson Public Schools. So we just welcome everybody to the school board meeting tonight. My name is Camille Studd Sims, voted Vice President and acting in the role of President tonight. We also want to welcome back a new board member. Since we last met, we have Letitia Johnson, who is our newest board member, and she's representing Ward Two. So we welcome everybody back. Now we'll have the pledge of allegiance by an Area Three person, and the Area Superintendent will introduce the person.
Good evening. Christopher Hawkins is a fifth-grade student from Boyd Elementary. His principal is Dr. Valerie Bradley. Christopher is a member of the school's honor society. He likes to read, play basketball, watch television, and play video games. One of Christopher's favorite pastimes is spending time with his family and particularly his cousins. When he grows up, he wants to attend Mississippi State University, become a lawyer, and eventually run for President of the United States.
May you please stand for the pledge. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and a visible for liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Christopher, if you would remain standing up front. We have a token of our appreciation, and our colleague, Mr. Oppenheim, will present. Our next president is coming from JPS. I want you all to recognize that.
I was going to say, we have a lot of future presidents from this district, which I think is a good thing. So, Mr. Hawkins, thank you so much for coming up here and sharing the pledge with us. How was your first day of school?
Good.
Good, great. That's what I like to hear.
And I'd like to say one more thing. Go Dawkins!
Yeah. Hold on, hold on. I don't have to say anything else. Well, do you have family, actually? And I see your principal is here. Right, one-way family?
My dad couldn't make it.
That's all right. Well, I'm sure he'll see the video of you soon. We're going to take, hold on.
Now we'll have a moment of inspiration. Minister James Fuller and our colleague, Mr. Jones, will give the introduction.
Okay. Minister James Fuller. Mr. James Fuller is a member of Mount Charity Baptist Church and has been in the ministry for three years. Minister Fuller is a senior at Murrah High School. He is the head leader for the Mustang for Christ Choir at Murrah High. He loves to sing and preach. He was chosen for the 2016-2017 Youth Choice Award and also the 2016-2017 Daniel Award. He plans to attend Jackson State and major in choral music and one day be able to teach music within the Jackson Public School District. Minister Fuller loves those two words: stay humble. Please welcome Minister James Fuller, 12th grader at Murrah High School.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm here today to the board members, here to tell everybody for inspiration that put your trust in Jesus. No matter what people say, no matter what people do, regardless of how people lie on you or tell the truth, always put your trust in the Master. And we must work together as JPS people, okay? Jackson Public School, we must work together. We must love one another. When we're down, we must pick each other up, because in my Bible, it says, "I can do all things through Christ, whose strength is me." As long as you trust and believe in Him, God will and He can make a way just for Jackson Public School. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. Mr. Fuller, would you remain? We have something to give you, please.
Go ahead and go in the middle of the floor. Mr. Fuller, it's indeed a pleasure and honor to standing before you on behalf of the board and superintendent and as well as the faculty and staff that make up Jackson Public Schools. We want to thank you for giving us such an inspirational and as well as, you know, a motivational message for us today as we enter this new school year. We want to wish success on you this year as you enter your senior year, and I know Jackson State is very happy and very proud to see you come aboard and be a part of the, they call it Tiger Nation. But please accept these expressions of our appreciation for you being here this evening with us. Did you come alone? Do you have anybody with you?
Oh, mine too.
Oh, Shanti. All right, Ms. Rosen, that's all right. Okay, we'll take a picture here.
All right, we actually have a quorum tonight since we have four board members present. So we will move on to the adoption of the agenda.
So move.
It's been moved and seconded, the adopt the agenda. Reading and approval of minutes, we've got June 20th, 26th, work session. Oh, guess what? We got a vote. Okay. All in favor of the adoption of the minutes, would you say aye and raise your hand?
Aye.
I think it was the agenda.
Now we'll move to reading and approval of the minutes. June 20th, special budget meeting; June 20th, regular meeting; June 26th, work session and special meeting. June 20th, regular meeting.
So move.
Second.
Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Board members, you have one person who's signed to speak to you tonight, Ms. Aniva Mae Pittman. She would like to address you to encourage teachers and staff that we will survive and thrive. The system will rise again.
To the superintendent, President of the Board, and especially my representative, Ms. Johnson, I stand here with the feeling of pride because as a 1952 graduate of Lenear High School and a 30-year-old retiree as a teacher at elementary school, to suggest to you or to say to you, to encourage you, that how you began tonight gives me all the courage that I need to know that we're going to, the South will rise again. Jackson Public Schools will rise again. Of course, last month, I celebrated my 83rd birthday, but I still can teach, and I'm willing to volunteer at Isabelle Elementary School and Lenear High School and maybe any other place that I'm needed, to see this school system survive. This system and the schools all over the United States of America, as far as people of our huge concern, always doomed to fail, because when you don't give us the same amount of money, good books would not have been used at other schools and some of the pages torn out of it, then we still rise, because we have our children. When I went to Lenear's Class Day and I witnessed those children getting scholarships from the most prestigious colleges in this country, I know that something is good going on. Thank you, and God bless you.
Ms. Pittman, you had another minute. That was the one-minute warning.
Oh, I'm sorry. You broke my train of thought.
I've stopped until you get it back.
Oh, so as I was saying, excuse me, Isabelle is my baby, and Lenear is my grown child. But the rest of the schools are my kinfolk, so if I'm needed there, I'll be there. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you.
That's all, board members.
Thank you. All right, now we'll move to review of discipline cases.
No cases.
No cases.
No cases for review.
Superintendent's reports and announcements.
Good morning. I'm sorry, good evening. Been a long day, board members. First, I'd just like to take a point of privilege to welcome again Ms. Johnson to our board. We appreciate your willingness to serve, and we thank you. And I'd like to thank all of our staff, our teachers, classified and certified personnel in the district for a great start to the school year. We had a very good first day. I had the opportunity to visit 11 schools. We have 12 new principals, and I had an opportunity to visit 11. I think Power A-PAC was the only place I didn't make it, and I'll be there tomorrow. So we had very productive systems in place throughout the district. We had, in most cases, all of our students had schedules. Every classroom, we had individuals there to greet our students. So we felt good about that. Transportation, just an update, I know that's a very interesting topic for us, but transportation, I got a report, a progress report this afternoon. We had 208 routes today. We have a driver for every route. Buses were on schedule. Think we had, at the elementary level, we had one late bus at Power A-PAC, one at Casey, one at Span. We had two late buses at the middle school and two late buses at the high school. And this was system-wide, and some of those late buses was because we returned to pick up students who had missed the bus or were not at bus stops. So I'd like to give transportation just today, you know, a round of applause for our work that they did. And so, again, it's our goal this year to have on-time arrival for all of our students each and every day. We know that, you know, things will happen, but it's our goal, and we'll work each and every day to make sure that our students are on time. But we did have a good start, and we want to celebrate those small victories. So today, Dr. Lock, your team, thank you all for your hard work. Also, on registration, we want to encourage our parents to register students. Today, we have 19,577 students that have completed registration, which is awesome. We have about 1,500 that are in the process of registration there. So hopefully by the end of tonight, we'll have over 22,000 students registered. We still have about 6,000 students that we need to register, parents. We can't afford for our students to miss any school, so we encourage you to get students registered. We have the superintendent's hotline that's open if you have any questions. Feel free to contact that hotline, and we'll support you. This year, we're projected to have 27,707 students. So we are, that's a good number. A good percentage of our parents have already completed registration and students are ready for school. But just note that every student has to complete registration in order to be in school. We've sent out a letter to parents, I think it's the 15th, Dr. Sargent. All parents will need to complete registration by the 15th. After the 15th, students, you know, will not be able to attend school without registering. So again, it's very important, we don't want any students not to be in school, but we are, we have to have students enrolled properly in school. So we're asking all of our parents to complete registration by the 15th in order to attend school. Okay?
Dr. Murray, I just need to ask this one question. If a parent has not finished registration, can they send their children to school without being registered completely?
Again, until the 15th of August, which is next Tuesday, students can attend school while we're going through the process of registration. But after the 15th, students, we would expect all students to be registered. There are a lot of variables that go into that, you know, feeding, that we just can't, we have to have students in the system to actually, to feed them. And so there are a lot of variables. It's not that we are trying to be difficult, but students have to be registered in school to be JPS students. And so we are encouraging our parents to go on and register the students. Yes, sir.
Thank you for that. That was a super helpful update. I feel like I've gotten more emails and calls this year about registration issues. Did anything change in the process?
Yes, well, Dr. Sargent, if it's appropriate, can I ask Dr. Sargent to come up? Well, I can just tell you, of course, the audit, the cap, we're going through an audit process, and much of, many of the findings were related to cumulative records, us not having the appropriate documentation in cumulative records. And so with that, we had to put systems in place to ensure that this is not an issue. And so Dr. Sargent can speak to that and to explain to you what's a little different that might be kind of causing the buzz now.
One thing that's different is last year, our parents that needed special registration consideration, for example, homeless population, foster care population, many of our grandparents and uncles that are taking care of children that they don't have legal custody of, are those parents that are living with relatives that don't have their own homes that have to do a shared affidavit. Those were handled by the schools last year, but we wanted to make sure that those were handled properly this year because of the numbers that we have. So that process has taken place at the central office this year. So that process is different. We are making sure that we collect all of our birth certificates and immunization documents to make sure that we are complying with standard six, which deals with residency requirements and the process standards. So this audit has caused us to take a, you know, closer look at our procedures and get somewhat a little more stringent with what we're doing, but it's a necessity, because we want to make sure that all of our CUM folders have the appropriate documentation for residency requirements.
And thank you for that explanation. I think that answers a couple of questions that I know have been raised with me. So for something like the birth certificate, if my child has been in the district for five or six years, are they going to have to present their birth certificate every single year? Or can we have a system in place so that they're not having to track down that kind of a document every single year?
If they're a returning student, no, they won't have to present it every single year. We just started from scratch this year because of the number of issues we had with our records. And so we appreciate, you know, the patience from our parents. They've been very compliant with bringing those birth certificates, even though they had copies, existing copies in the CUM folders, they did bring the original copies so that we could compare them and make sure that we had the most up-to-date copy. You know, sometimes with those birth certificates, you register kindergarten, you know, six years later, you decide to add a parent to the birth certificate that may not have been there at kindergarten. So it was just a good time to refresh our folders. But to answer your question, no, they will not have to bring birth certificates beyond this year. It'll probably be another four or five years or more down the road before we have to go through that process again.
Yeah, thank you. And I think that'd be helpful for the next week until August 15th for that to be clear when folks are trying to register, because I know that particular issue and a couple of other kind of related issues have, people are, why do we have to do this? You know, we've been in the system for a long time.
Yes.
Hey, one question. Thank you, my President, Superintendent Murray. With the advances of working with the students, what does it, what would it look like to have a pre-registration before they actually leave school? How would that help?
We've thought about that. The problem is that you don't know where the kids are going to be, because we have our magnet programs, we have our pre-k programs, a lot of parents are applying to those programs. And so you don't know which kids are going to return to those programs, you don't know which kids are going to withdraw. And so we start collecting that information, say in February or March, and some things change, families find themselves going through it again. So we do start an early registration for new students. For our early students, just through practice over the past three years, we found it best to start early July, because by that time, they're settled, they know where they're going to go, that way they don't have to report to that one school to share that information.
Thank you. Okay. And Dr. Sargent, just to note, I think that's important for our community to know, you know, we don't have parents that are trying to get over. Dr. Sargent, we've talked today, and we really have thousands of parents who are, who need to do affidavits and things like that. So our parents are living, you know, we have young parents in many cases, living with parents, grandparents. So this process is extremely important, and we have to go through this tedious process to make sure that we're compliant with the requirements that are outlined by the accountability tomorrow. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And the last thing is our cap, of course. We'd like to, I'd like to announce that the audit is closed. So, would I give applause? It is officially closed at this point. So we look to hear in the next couple of months the findings from the audit, but the audit is closed. But we are continuing our work, and at this point, going to ask Dr. Murray to come up and provide an update on where we are with the...
All right. Good evening, Dr. Murray, Ms. Sims, and board members. At this time, as we started the school year, we have done a little bit, some things differently as it relates to addressing the corrective action plan. So what we have done, we've had a series of meetings, and on last Thursday, standard leaders trained all administrators on the monitoring instruments that MDEUs are. In some cases, we developed our own monitoring instruments with the assistance of the consultants to monitor the standards. So at that meeting, principals and assistant principals were trained on if an auditor comes in, this is what they are looking for. From that process, they were to go back to their buildings and develop compliant, compliance team, a compliance team within their building. So for example, if there's, the librarian will monitor the library and make sure that all components of that monitoring instrument are met, and so on and so forth. And so at this point in time for the month of August, they are completing a self-analysis on all of the relevant standards in their building. And at the end of the month, they will report their findings to their respective assistant superintendent. If there are needs or things that they need support in, the standard leaders and people of that nature will provide the support to make sure that they are in compliance. But the thing that we want to do is be very proactive, whereas principals mostly are informed of what the expectations are, and they know how to address those expectations according to the process standards. And so after the self-analyses is over in August, we will begin, and once we address any findings that may be out there, then we will begin self-monitoring within the district to make sure that all standards are being, and expectations are being met.
Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thanks, Dr. Murray and Dr. Mary. Just timelines, so you said by the end of August, they'll have their internal school-based instruments created and developed?
Well, the instruments have been created with the, some instruments we're using from MDE. Some instruments we developed because based on what some of the findings were and the cap, the monitoring instrument did not address everything, so we made our instruments more stringent to make sure that we address all components that were outlined in the cap. And so we will begin after the schools complete their self-monitor and their self-analysis process. In September, we will begin to monitor at the district level to make sure that the implementation is occurring in all buildings.
Thank you. And then, did they give you a sense of what their timeline is on the audit findings?
Well, generally, it takes about 30 days, give or take a few days, 30 days, to complete their report. Now, they did note that our last report was 300 pages. That was 20 standards. So, I mean, that was 20 schools. This is all schools, all standards. So the volume of this report will be massive, and so it takes time to pull that together. And so again, we're thinking in the next 30 to 60 days, we should receive something from MDE, and we'll, of course, as soon as we receive it, we'll provide it for the board.
Thank you.
Back to closing superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Murray. We're excited about getting off to a great start, and I know the registration is really, really important. We can appreciate the methodology that we're going through. It is some extra steps, and we've heard about it. But if we get everything in alignment, we'll be better off at the end of the year. Thank you. So we'll now move on to information items only. I think that'd be Attorney Shepherd.
Thank you, Ms. Sims, Dr. Murray, other members of the board. You have before you the review of Section I, the instructional policies, and these policies are just presented for review. There will need to be some revisions to them, and we will bring those revisions back at the next meeting. I think we've done a pretty good job of summarizing the policies in the executive summary, and you will see some are deleted for duplication purposes as well as just outdated. But you will see a surprising number of these again at a later meeting. They will be placed before you for action later.
Thank you. All right, now we move to action, information action items. Strategic budget planning. We talked to Mississippi School Board Association about helping us to develop a major strategic plan that goes from one to five years. So now we need to determine if we will move forward with that with their assistance. I've spoken to Mrs. Jackson at, DeNotre-Jackson at Mississippi School Board Association, and they will come at no cost to the district if we determine a time that they will come. It is a half-day session, though. We were trying to get it done, so we just need to vote on if we would allow them to help us start our strategic planning to help us move forward with all the things that we need to do to make sure that we're, have a strategy for the next few years. So at this time, I will receive a motion to allow Mississippi School Board Association meet with the board and executive branch of the superintendent's to train us on strategic planning.
Can I ask a question before we vote?
Sure.
This says strategic budget planning.
That's going to be a part of it.
Okay, so it's strategic budget and school district-wide strategic planning.
Overall.
I didn't know if we had to change the language for vote, because this, the way it's written just makes it look like it's just about budget.
Yeah, I actually think it would be if you just said strategic planning.
Strategic planning.
So move, that we schedule a time to allow the Mississippi School Board Association come... to come, come over to do a overview of, of strategic plan to include budget in as well as district-wide planning for one to five years.
A second.
Okay. We raise your vote? You have a question?
Yes, ma'am. Thanks, Ms. Sims. Just real quickly, I wanted to ask Dr. Murray's input on this, if this was the approach that you also saw as most relevant and best to take?
Well, we, we definitely, the current strategic plan that we are, we're under was developed under previous administration, and we, we do need, and the previous board. And so I think it's important that we develop a strategic plan for the next five years. This is work that we've actually already kind of started looking into, so we, I think it is, and it's appropriate to move in this direction and, and get advice from Mississippi School Board, along with, with others, on the strategic plan, because I think it involves, it's going to involve a lot of other individuals other than just the district.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, one, that the idea was right, the time, I agree that it absolutely is, but also if MSBA is the right entity to help us with that, I'm perfectly happy to have them do it free of charge, I think that's a, that's a good idea. It did make me think, and I'll bring it back up again when we vote on the policy, the first policy that we're asked to vote on is about strategic mission and vision, so I was going to ask that, we table that when we get to that point, because this was also on the agenda, but I'll get to that later. Thank you for that.
All right. All right, we're ready to vote. All approving for the strategic planning with Mississippi School Board. Thank you. Okay, we have next, item B and C. Do you all want to take this single, together, or would you like to do it individually? Approval of?
I would ask for individually.
Individually, okay.
Who is it?
Item B, approval to serve as perceptor for interns with the Gulf Coast dietary. Ms. Hill, would you come forward to explain what we have?
Good evening. Ms. Studds, Dr. Murray, board members, we are requesting that we utilize interns from USM. We've been doing that in the past, but it had not come before the board for approval, so we're bringing it for approval. We have students that request Jackson Public Schools as their site to do their internship. So we're requesting that the board will approve it and allow them to come into the district and work in food service for various periods of time. Normally, it's anywhere from two to eight weeks.
Any questions?
So move. All right, if I may, I'd like to, you know, thank you for, for shepherding that I know that you're highly thought of in this, in this food service nutritional world, so we really appreciate that. And I think this is a great opportunity for other divisions within our district to look for some opportunities like this to get some young and bright innovative minds in to, to shepherd the load a little bit.
Thank you, and they enjoy it, they really enjoy coming, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. It's been moved and seconded, now we're ready for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, item C, school improvement grant submission.
Okay. Well, Dr. Merritt, if you could come up. Just at this point, we are, we are planning to submit four grants to MDE, four school improvement grants. You all know it was well documented a few months ago that we had some issues and did not, were not timely in the submission. So we, we said then that we would, it was going to be an opportunity again in August, and we would have those in, and we, we have done that, those documents are ready for submission, but it requires a board approval to, for us to be able to submit them to MDE. So we're requesting at this time, the board's approval for submission. We provided for you, and I apologize for the confusion, but we provided some very thick documents for you yesterday, those are the actual grants, three of the four. One, we're, we're working on for Timberline, but that's three complete grants that are ready for, with, with, we have some simple edits that have to be made, but they're ready to be presented to MDE. So Dr. Merritt can answer any specific questions about the grant that you might have, but that's, that's what we're requesting at this time.
I have one question, I actually. Dr. Merritt, actually, I was rather confused as to what is the academic increase that you're anticipating by having these grants go forth? I believe it was.
So in year one, we talked about an academic increase of 2%. So as you implement the model and the interventions, you kind of benchmark what, how you want to see this improvements overall in student achievement. And so the first year, because it's an implementation year, you're always typically, during the implementation year, you're not going to see as much achievement among students because they're learning the process and the programs that are being implemented. So I think what you're referencing in year one, we talked about a 2%, 2% increase overall in student achievement, and from there, it's benchmarked higher for each year, because roughly statistically, you would, you would go from 2% to 5%.
So the subsequent years will be 5%?
Yes, ma'am, a higher, based on the improvements that we see from year one, from the benchmark year.
So is it tradition that we start at 2%? That seems so very low.
Well, yes, ma'am. You want, overall, when you're looking at what's statistically significant, that you would start at that rate, because it's an implementation year, so to speak, if I'm.
I want to ask one more question on that. So when will it start implementing?
So should the grant be approved, the process, I think you start the planning process in January, and so we hope to fully implement the 18, 19 school year.
So, oh, the, the full school year, 18, starting August of 18 to the end of the year, we only hope to gain 2% increase?
Yes, ma'am.
I still think that's so very low. I don't know, I just think it's low. Why are we shooting, why, why is it so low?
It's not really low statistically, if, if something is around 5%, I mean, that, that's a significant gain. I don't think we want to be overzealous in this, and that it's a benchmark year, and being that we will, will be implementing the model one and the intervention two, I think that's a good goal to show some increase as it relates to that.
Okay.
Question, to ask additional question as it relates to, you know, your projections. How will you leverage, or how does this opportunity with this grant enable us, since we have a instructional management plan in place, be able to leverage what we hope we will receive to move even further? So how, I mean, what will your base be at this, at this point of, once, once you receive this, once we receive this grant, speaking positively into this?
Yes, sir, and I think I understand what you're saying, Mr. Jones. So when you talk about the models that are being implemented at each school, and the interventions, the thing that is, that is doing is building professional capacity and sustainability, and that's what we want to do. We will be able to sustain the, our efforts based on the training, because a lot of this is training our staff with, in best practices in order so that they can be more effective in the classroom. So hopefully, our outcomes and what we, we are sure that will happen is based on the intervention and the model that each school selected, and I don't, let me just say this, it wasn't only selected by the school administration team, but the community had input in selecting these models, that it will strengthen our teaching and learning at each school, and we will be able to sustain what we have.
Any more questions, Mr. Open Eye?
Yeah, thank you, and thanks, Dr. Merritt, for doing, doing all this.
With help.
Yeah, it's going to help me build my muscles. Appreciate you coming forward on this. Can you describe actually what the four different grants, I mean, the four different models are really briefly, and then also the different practices that will take place as a result of this?
So we have, there are several different models, and just to give a little background, MDE selected some models for each of the schools in the community to choose from. So one thing that you have, that I believe you have two schools selecting from, is the whole school reform model. And that's basically a model where they're looking at reforming the entire school, it may include replacing staff and faculty, and just bringing in an instructional best practice. One school may have selected one model which may be successful for all, or another type of model to help them improve, the overall goal is to improve teaching and learning in the building. So it depended on what the school selected, but I think the two models that, I'm pretty sure, it was whole school reform and the turnaround model, those are the two models that the four grants will address.
And could you describe those in a little bit more detail about what the difference is? I know you talked about one might result in teachers or administration.
Which would be the?
Reform is such a vague term and means something different to everybody, and for me is somewhat of a, almost a curse word.
So the turnaround model, for example, where we have new principals in place, they can look at, once they do a self-analysis of their building and staff, they can look at making a recommendation to replace some of their staff in order to bring either better highly qualified staff in in specific subject areas in order to build capacity and improve teaching and learning in that building. So that's pretty much the turnaround model, I consider it a more aggressive practice. The whole school reform is where you basically, and this is basically the difference, one deals with replacing some of the staff, and the whole school reform model is just basically training the staff that you have in place and with the model or the intervention selected, and strengthening the team within.
Then, so who's going to come and do this work?
Okay, so there are consultants that are outlined by MDE that you can contract with to come and do these, the models with, and that's what we have done, and that's what we were written into the grant.
And do we have any sense of the folks who are the whole schools reformers or the turnaround, do they have backgrounds in any kind of charterization or voucher-esque type programs anywhere where they've been doing the work?
I'm not sure exactly about that, but one thing I can say, as specified by MDE, these are entities that have evidence-based practices, and so what they have done has been proven and true in other areas, and has brought about positive results in school reform. And so they have very good, a very good track record as it relates to school improvement and reform.
And they've worked in predominantly low-income communities of color before?
They've worked in various communities, and yes.
And is all that data in here?
Pretty, I, I can provide you the data as it relates to the various programs, the models, and the entities.
Yeah, and I would appreciate that. I, I think my point in terms of asking for documents was these kind of, this kind of information, because oftentimes, as I've said, ad nauseam, we get stuff that doesn't have the data background, we need that information, we need to clear so that we understand. I'm fully in support of applying for the school improvement grant, but I am concerned about how, you know, the model works in this state and for our community and our children. So the only other question that I was going to ask, if we wanted to push them and say we actually want to use this, these funds to pay teachers better, or do like a teacher, grow our own teacher model, since that's a huge gap, is that something that we could have done with this application?
There are some stipulations where you can do some of that in there, as it relates, and I think it's basically what we're doing now, and giving stipends and things of that nature. So there, there is some creativity within some of the models that you can have, within the grant, that you can do that.
Thank you.
I have one question, if I may. Because we have these grants already in the system now, correct? I think some of our schools already have one, have the SIG grant, correct?
No, sir.
No, 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 no. Okay.
That was the old model.
Old model, okay. All right, with that, what have we learnt from the opportunities from the previous schools that were able to use these funds and on a different title, that will enable us to really leverage the, the resources that we're going to be afforded, hopefully, willingly with these funds coming in? Does that help the information that we were collecting, you know, through those schools, as we look at the schools that you've already outlined? How does this, how does this position us? How will this position us? Well, we, we think in applying for the grant, we, we felt like it would add value to, to those buildings. In the past, we, we've had SIG grants, and we've, we learned from, from those positives, and, and we learned ways to do things a little differently. So I think we are, in writing the grant, we, we use the lessons that we learned in the past, is, is not, you have to build capacity within your building, can't buy a bunch of stuff, hire a bunch of people, you know, you have to build capacity within your building, and that's what these grants attempt to do, build capacity. So when the money is gone, we can still provide the kind of support that our students deserve, so.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? I actually have a question, since this is our second pass on this particular group coming before us. My question is, would we want to still keep it at the same level of compensation as, as my other board members?
I think that would come up when you take up that tri-K contract.
Okay.
This is just a submission of the grant.
Okay. So we move right on for voting on this grant?
Submission.
Submission.
Mm-hmm.
Any more questions?
Okay, just, just to add, there's one additional grant that's not, it's Timberline, and we're still working on it, but that's, it's four, you have three, and there's one, it's, it's in there, oh, I'm sorry.
What's the date?
The 24th?
24th?
August 24th.
Okay.
I'm sorry, it wasn't in yesterday, it's in, thank you, I'm Ms. Williams.
Thank you. All right, we're ready to vote?
Yes.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
So move.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Johnson said, I don't know. All right, thank you, this passed. All right, Ms. Miller, consent, agenda items. Do we want to take these separately, or do we want to take them all? Board members, did you, like, any of them pulled out?
I'd be interested in having D, F, and G pulled out.
D?
Which are the tax note ones and the adblocker.
Okay. All right, Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Ms. Sims, Dr. Murray, members of the board. I could present to you for your approval tonight, consent agenda items, finance, A is the approval of disbursements and accounts payable from June 10th through July 28th. B is the approval of formal bids, and the bid information is included in your bid packet. It is the award to Cisco for frozen food, meat products, crackers, and chips. The approval, C, the approval of donations, if I may, the donation that we have at this point is from Ms. Lakita Matthews to Northwest Ivy Middle School, $560 from the, for the cheer, from the Cheerleader Booster Club to pay for transportation expenses for the Item E is the recommendation to dispose of surplus property. Items D and F actually go together. Board members, if you recall, we spoke during the budget process about the need to address some facility upgrades and improvements, specifically the athletic fields at Forest Hill High School, and also the athletic field at Newell Field. Additionally, you saw some reports several weeks ago on some schools that we had identified that need some infrastructure repair, and so throughout, throughout the budget process, we talked about the opportunities that the district had to enter into agreements to issue what's called limited tax notes, in the amount of two and a half, 2.5, not to exceed $2.5 million. in the amount of two and a half, 2.5, not to exceed 2.5 million dollars, to provide funds for those specific projects. So, item D, because of the timing, at the last board meeting, there was a need to have you approve us to move forward to sale and to offer those limited tax notes for bids. So, that's item D. We did that. The bids were received on yesterday at four o'clock. We received two bids, one from Trustmark and one from Bancor South. So, item F actually now allows us to enter into the approval of the resolution to authorize us to issue those limited tax notes to Bancor South. They offered us an interest rate of 2.31% and compared to Trustmark's rate of 3.25%. What I have done, and it kind of ties in, if I may, just kind of make the connection to the avalorm, this is part of our debt service that will be paid through the taxing entity. So, we will present this to the City of Jackson as we have also our other debt service. So, we have to include this debt as a new process to the, as a new debt, debt issuance of the district. So, when you go into item G, which is the approval of the debt service budgets and the resolution, this is included there. Item G does now allow us to make our resolution and request to the City of Jackson, who is our taxing entity in dollars, for our avalorm. That will include the 72.6 million dollars that is included in operations and then the other, the other dollars are for debt service, our GO bonds, our other limited tax notes. Very pleased to see, if you will call back during the budget process, we did advertise and it's by statute, we have to advertise the intent if we intend to maybe request additional dollars. Very pleased because of the great interest rate that we received that the first debt service payment will only be $266,000. So, the debt, the avalorm request overall is, it's only an increase of about $317,000 from the previous year. Now, we don't do meals, we do dollars, but in my estimation, it will be a very, very minimal impact on meals coming from JPS. The good thing that we have seen so far is that our assessed valuation went up 0.6%. We had, it's always good to have growth in the, in the county and in the city, so that's a good, that's a good sign that Jackson is on the move and we're growing. So, that, we will submit that with your approval to the City of Jackson and they will then move on to approve our budget and set the meals, the meals rate by September 15th. So, that's like all three of those kind of mixed in.
All right. Questions?
I have one question, please. If I may ask you, there's one accounts payable claim that I would like to go to.
Okay.
And then we'll get back to this. It's on page 19.
Okay.
This one, 180, 64.
Who's the vendor?
Siemens. It's item 382107, it's on page 19.
Is that for, I have, I have all three of them in there, so is that the one for?
100, 180, 69, 9450.
Yes, sir.
What was it?
We have a maintenance agreement with Siemens 20 some odd years ago, almost. The district entered into a, an agreement with Siemens and they did some energy saving, energy saving ideas. And so, this is the 12th year of, I believe, 14 payments, 14 years of payments that we make on this equipment, maintenance on the equipment that was put in at the time. And as you know, we are, we use our HVAC and our other equipment till it can't stand anymore, but the good thing about this maintenance contract is that anything that occurs with those items, Siemens comes in and they make those needed repairs or replacement. So, that's what that's for.
Okay. So, if a unit, let me understand this correctly, if I'm following you correctly, when a unit is out at a school or facility or what have you, they actually come over and handle that for us?
If it's, if it's the unit that was put in place back when we first initiated this.
Okay, thank you. All right. The other question, going back to the, to the proposed debt service there, again, this, the purpose of these in terms of what we're issuing them for, because I noticed in one of the presentations, I think we had a chance to talk about it already, but we wanted to make sure that we're all clear, that this is for servicing the item that you currently mentioned?
Yes, sir.
Because there was some other items in there saying transportation, some other things?
Yes, sir. I think in the definition of the resolution, it defined project and it actually detailed out the types of projects that you can use these dollars for.
Okay.
But this, this, this two and a half million dollars will be specifically for Forest Hill High School, Athletic Field, the field at Newell Field, the repairs and some of the things that we saw that, I think you saw the presentation at Wingfield High School and also at Brinkley Middle School. I will say to the board at this point, we do have some opportunity at a later point that I would like to speak with you about some opportunities for some GO debt going into the 18, 19 school year that we may be able to gain about $5 million to commit to these types of projects again. So, I think we can put in place, I like to hear the strategic plan, that this may be a way of planning to address some of those building needs that have been identified through the cap and through the process that we have gone through with MDE.
Okay. If I also may add, work with Ms. Miller, thank you so much for everything you've done. We, in a budget committee, I think we're one now. Have talked about specific schedules to identify those projects to ensure that those funds are going directly toward what has been stated in a, in a, in a very clear and concise completing manner. I know that some of the concerns that were brought up were that, you know, the projects perhaps did not go all the way through. And so, one of the concerns of the committee was to ensure that we are down to the penny on, on what we need to ensure everything is being put into place for you. So, thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Miller, for coming forward and kind of echoing a little bit of Mr. Jones' comment, just in terms of priorities. I know you mentioned that the board needs to decide which of these are the priorities. So, at what point do you need us to make that decision?
It'd be helpful to do it now.
Great. And so, my other question on that is, what is the athletic department doing to raise their own revenue in order to be able to work on some of those facilities?
Well, I think we, Mr. Johnson and I have talked specifically about creative ways to raise money, looking at, he's selling season passes to individuals who would like to do that. That gets revenue, additional revenue into the district. Working with private entities, we are looking at, of course, the opportunity to replace some of our scoreboards and replace those scoreboards with areas that allow us to basically have advertising space that will bring additional revenue in. And so, we are looking to make sure that the revenue, that first athletics become completely self-sustaining and then work toward making a profit that will go back into the athletic facilities and the athletic activities of our students.
Thank you for that. I mean, I know my frustration with the, with the athletic department over the years is it's our, really our only revenue generating department, right?
It is.
And, and it always concerns me that we kind of have the same ideas and the same thoughts about how we're going to do that, but I'm not sure, it's hard to tell what's kind of moved, you know, and so when I see fixing athletic fields and whatnot, you know, when comparing to school facilities, it just kind of concerns me that, one, we're not, I don't know if it's a creativity thing or what about going after whatever other laws or else, because people, private people love to fund athletics. And so, part of me is like, there really needs to be a much better plan coming from that department to do that because that's a revenue-making department, whereas our facilities are falling apart and it's much harder to find dollars for them.
Well, and you know, a couple of, several months ago, we formed an athletic advisory committee, which is made up of coaches and community folks, business people. Initially, we had targeted a baseball field, but I think we are reconfiguring that under the leadership of Mr. Johnson to bring those entities into the district that can help us write grants. I know Mr. Johnson has written a grant to Major League Baseball, writing grants, going after those private dollars, getting those donors here, former athletes who are, who are able to make tho, write those big checks and also bring in people who, who also can write big checks. So, I think you'll see the creativity come from this athletic advisory committee who will assist the district. We also established a fund in the district where people can make donations that will be specifically used for athletic facilities, not, you know, gym shoes and things of that nature. So, there, I think, are some different things coming. This advisory committee has been meeting and so I think that you will see that partnership with the district go forth this year.
And I remember us, I think, voting or passing on, for that fund.
Yes, sir.
I haven't seen any advertisements or, hey, come, come donate, you know.
Well, I think what we heard from the advisory committee was, in order to get people to make donations, you have to have a project. And we had really gone out and, and we have a beautiful, Mr. Jones sits on that advisory committee and Dr. Murray, we have a beautiful, beautiful rendering of a baseball field. But I think the committee decided that that may not be the priority right now. And so, in order to get the big donors, you really need a project to put your name on and they can see their names going on it. So, I think it's good to slow walk this process because what we don't want to do is have folks donating and it just sit there for years and they never see progress.
Yeah, and thank you for that. I'll, I'll get off of, yeah, I'm sorry, Coach Johnson. The other question I was, well, really, it's more of a statement. It kind of continues to be hard. When I look at a dollar amount like 2.5 million and I think my questions that always come back to our security department on top of any, some of our other departments that I think could be operating at less costs, I see where it'd be very easy to not have to go out and do this, and of course, I'm not the finance person, but I do see over $4 million going into security and here we're asking for 2.5 for this, for the tax note. And so, that doesn't always add up in my head in terms of how we're being most efficient with our resources when we could really be thinking about this differently in terms of what we're already doing and how we're already operating within the district. So, that was more of my soapbox.
All right, any more questions? Okay, can I get a motion for A, B, C, and E?
So...
Second. All right, so now we're going to vote for A, B, C, and E. All in favors?
All right.
Are you not voting?
I'm abstaining.
Abstaining, okay. Three to one. All right, now we're going to go to D, F, and G. Any questions?
Well, when, colleagues, when do we want to decide on what our priorities are there?
Okay. We want to decide priorities tonight?
We, if I may suggest, let's kind of schedule a work session to get that, you know, that hammered out until we'll be here, until we really know.
And, yes, sir, and we will need that really quickly because, because we had been talking about these projects, we kind of, that's what we had told people, that's what we were going to do. And so, we need to have this before we close to make sure that, you know, the projects are all nailed down and that is exactly where we're going to spend the dollars.
What's your deadline?
The 18th.
Okay. This week or early next week?
Okay. That, today's eight, so, all right. So, we need to schedule a work session to do this or just a committee?
Committee, committee can do it.
We can do it in committee?
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Jones, you are the head of budget?
Sure.
Of the line, are you on that committee?
I can be, I can be if you want.
You can be? Ms. Johnson, we don't want to leave you out now. You can, you can raise your hand and volunteer on anything. We want to bring you right along.
I'm on the board. I, I'd be happy to help you.
Great deal.
Okay. All right, so...
Okay, 15. We'll get with you after...
Yes, sir, but what we'll need to do is approve the resolution, including this as a part of the avalorm request because it does have to be at the city by the 15th.
Sure.
So, we need to vote on this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, with that said, can I get a motion for?
So, move.
Second.
Okay, that would be for item D and, D, E, D, F, and G, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. We ready to vote? All in favor?
All right.
I'm abstaining.
Abstaining, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we're down to consent, agenda items. General. All right, there's a slew of them. Do you all want to, Dr. Murray, do you want to bring any of these forward?
If there's anything specifically that you all would like us to, to talk about, otherwise.
I have a question on D.
Okay. Question on D?
And if we could pull out I, K, and L, so that's...
I, K, and L?
... policies, K, and L.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I, K...
I, K, and L.
Are you pulling or just having a question on?
Oh, sorry, to talk about separately and do a separate vote.
Separate vote, okay. Do we need any discussions on any others?
I had a question about another one, but I think like Mr. Jones, I could wait until it's on the floor.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we're going to move to have A, B, C, E, F, G, H, J, and M. All right, questions?
Yeah. Okay, on instructional management plan.
Which item is it now?
That's not J.
J.
Is it, just mention J?
No, didn't mention J.
Okay, questions on J? That's approval for instructional management system.
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Okay, well, you, you want to start with D?
That'd be good, yes.
Okay, Ms. Evans, D.
Good evening, good evening, Dr. Murray, board members, JPS supporters. I am here to bring forth a recommendation to renew our services with HMH and REE180. So, I'm here to entertain any questions you may have.
Okay. I was reading through the, the information that was presented and thank you so much for providing that, it really helped me out a lot to the board. Could you give a little color to, I noticed that it mentioned a lot about intellectual property, like for instance, any information that, that is produced, they own, you know, you know, in here? So, how does that, how, how does the relationship work as we're using the software and you have your teachers or persons using, that's been authorized to use this, as they call it? How does this enable us to be able to grow from the information if they, if we actually don't own it, if I read this correctly?
Well, maybe, that may be, I can answer from my understanding. From my understanding, the HMH does capture data. As a matter of fact, for our principals, we've had two gains reports so that we can monitor the effectiveness of the implementation for our program. For instance, in June, on June the 12th, we had a meeting with all of our principals and our intervention department here in Jackson Public Schools and from that, we were able to understand that 63% of our students increased in their Lexiles and that's a way to measure reading ability and over 28% of them grew two grade levels even though we had only been implementing for five months. So, that's the kind of data that they share. To my understanding, they don't share district-specific data with anyone else outside of the district. with anyone else outside of the district. However, they do use the data that they gain to make improvements in the program and to tailor the program to the needs of our district.
So the information that, the data that's collected and processed, those, that information still belongs to us?
We have our own reports, and we can pull reports at any time. It's updated every night. And so like, the principals all received spiral bound binders of the reports. And every day, we can access it right now, as a matter of fact. So yes, we can pull the data for our own uses, and we do that frequently so that we know it's working. Or if it's not working, what we need to do about it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions on D? All right. Any, any questions on I?
I'm sorry, can you, so we just, I have a question about H, but I didn't ask for that one to be pulled. So are we talking about the ones that we aren't pulling right now? Or we're talking about the ones that we have pulled?
Since Dr. Murray pulled D first, and so I'm going through the ones that we are discussing, that were open for questions. So it'd be D, I, K, and L. And then we'll come back and vote.
My only question on I was, I was hoping that we could pull Policy BA, since that was the strategic mission and vision and whatnot, and table that one as a policy, given that hopefully we'll be doing...
With that strategic plan?
Yeah, given that we'll be doing that soon.
Okay.
That's fine, okay. Of course, but with that, since we are operating our pre-K program, I know one of the things that we needed was a, some type of procedures or what have you. Would this handle that process?
No, no, sir. You're still, hopefully, still going to approve the pre-K program policy.
Yeah, I'm just asking about BA, which is just, yeah, okay. And again, I will commend us for putting together the pre-K policy. I think that's huge and really important, and I sound repetitive on that one.
Okay.
So is that all right to just table BA?
That's fine. Okay, with that said, now we move to questions on approval of agreement between Kirkland Group and JPS, K?
Did you have J?
J.
J, I'm sorry. J, okay.
Yes.
J.
In terms of the instructional management plan, how has, was this, are there any difference in what we approved early in January compared to this year? Are there any additional updates?
Yes, yes, sir. There's been some updates. We approved the original plan for last year, because it's a requirement that we have a current instructional management system on, that's board-approved. So we did approve one back in January, and we're asking for approval for this one for this school year. And there's been some adjustments. We've streamlined some things. Mr. Brown, his team, along with all of the assistant, everyone that deals with instruction was involved in the revision of the document.
Okay. I noticed early on in the corrective action plan, and thank you for being here, that there were some questions as it relates to the standard 20. So would this here be able to enable us to move beyond those questions, those hurdles that we had to get over?
Yes, sir. I think this is, this is our instructional management system. This is how we operate from an instructional standpoint. So we've worked very closely with, Ms. Bailey is working with us, and we will make revisions where necessary. Again, it's a, it's a kind of a fluid document. If we see where there has to be changes, of course, we can make those adjustments and bring them back. But again, we feel that it's a solid document that helps our teachers and our principals move the needle. It's the work, and so in every school, we're going through the instructional management system with teachers. They are attesting to the fact that they've gone through it, and this is what we'll be looking for when we're in buildings, what's captured in this document.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for, for J? All right, questions now for K? Just open your.
Thanks, Ms. Evans.
I'm sorry.
Evening. You have before you the approval of an agreement for our formative assessment system. Take any of your questions at this time.
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Sergeant, for bringing this forward. So I know the last time we had a contract from the Kirkland Group, I was willing to support it because it was a training of trainers, which meant that that's kind of weaning us off of the need for this particular service. How do we handle that with this particular contract? Given that it's about a formative assessment, I continue to be just a little bit concerned about how much we use outside entities on a lot of these. And again, it's not a critique of the Kirkland Group. It's a critique of how we use consultants and what we're doing to sustain the work within the district. So if you could shed a little bit more insight around this particular contract would be great.
This is not, this particular contract is not a consultant contract. It's for a software service. Whether it be Kirkland or any other company, we would have to utilize a company to provide our formative assessments. Since the state has gone to a mandatory online across the state, we have to partner with a company to provide those formative assessments, as well as our benchmark assessments through online services, because we don't have the capacity to do that ourselves. Not only do we have the personnel to put those items together, we don't have the software to deliver those assessments to our children. They look like the assessments that they will see in May, April through May, when they take the end of the year assessment. And so this is more of a software service than it is a consulting service.
And so from my understanding, from the explanation that we use ATI for fifth and eighth grade, how does this work in terms of, for those students who are in fifth and eighth grade, once they get to the point where they're taking this formative assessment? Is it a different look? Is it a different feel than this other software company?
Just a little. The state has also used two different delivery methods in the past. Just this year, where they use one company to deliver both. But it's what we've learned over the years of doing these online assessments, even when we're doing pencil paper, it's very difficult for one company to accommodate all of our needs, both for testing and instructional. So when we use the item banks and the items that they prepare, when we use them for tests and we use them for instructional purposes, it exhausts the item banks fairly quickly. And so we're gonna use this contract that we've approved tonight to provide our ELA and math assessments, grades three through eight, as well as English and algebra. And ATI will continue to build our benchmark assessments, which those will be two, one in December, one in March. And we also will be able to use them to develop our fifth grade science, eighth grade science, U.S. history and biology. And so there will be the consistency in the ELA and math, and then there'll be the consistency with the science and the history.
Then, Dr. Murray, I know I've asked before, is there any kind of way we could get some kind of a vendor tree or a consultant tree of who and how we're using outside vendors slash consultants for the various work that we're asking folks to do? I think that'd be really helpful so that we have a better understanding of our sustainability on a lot of these things.
Yes, we can do that. And if I could just add, we are, we've been working very hard over the last couple of years to make sure that we are self-reliant. And so, but again, some areas, we will need support just by the sheer nature of the product. So we can do that, we can provide that. And I'd also like to note that this screening process involved teachers. Teachers were at the table and screened several companies, and this is, this was the winning, being they felt as though this was the product that could help them best in the classroom to support their students. So, but we can provide that for you. That would be relatively, we can do that short order for you. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
More questions, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, so if I'm understanding correctly, and the information that we gleaned from unpacking of the standard, that we unpacked the standard, for us to put together the assessment tools or instrument, we need someone else to come up with that piece of, in the process.
We need someone else to provide the assessment items so that we can put together the assessment that's aligned to the framework that we're teaching from the state.
Okay, so how does, how did this, and I guess I'm getting the question just down in the web, but trying to ask for clarity. How does this align with the curriculum area? Because I know that we are currently in a process where, as my colleagues mentioned, that we are going through a train to trainer. This is not a reflection on the Kirkland Group, but however, this is more of a clarity question for me, that if we are relying on this group, this company, to provide us documents or information for us to disseminate, how would this increase our, as you stated, ability to be self-reliant, particularly when we've invested a lot into a curriculum department to unpack this? We've invested a lot into providing trainings, particularly over the summer. We've definitely done that. So how would this position us to be based on the information that we have already put together? That we have put together as a district, as we're talking and working with these consultants? Because as we look at this, and we see the tenure that's been going on here, and as we begin to look at results, this is a very, very important decision that we have to make as a board.
Right.
Yes, sir. Dr. Sergeant, if I can, just some historical context. We, at one time, we had a curriculum, we had an assessment department who built assessments, you know, that it was a whole building of people. That was a different time. We now, this is required by MDE that all of our assessments are online. So, you know, in fairness to our students, we have to prepare them to do that. We don't have the current technology. We've not made that type of investment, you know, maybe moving forward. But at this point, we've not made that investment. So currently, over the past year, since the state has gone to this type of assessment method, we have to rely on another company, whether it be Kirkland, Case, ATI, someone else with a, with assessment items and a platform that can allow our students to do that online. So this is, this is a must that we use someone. It's kind of different than the curriculum piece. This is just a person to kind of host, accompany and host the testing and allow our students to be able to assess online. So it's a little different than the support that has been provided in the past by Kirkland, supporting teachers, helping with curriculum development. This is another wing, I guess, of their company. But again, this, so it's a little different than what we've had in the past from them.
Okay, and if I may, and thank you for that, make sure I'm understanding. You did mention that there will be some other assessment tools that will need to be done, particularly, I guess, in the science and...
Fifth and eighth grade science, U.S. history and biology, yes, sir.
Okay, so there are some other areas that goes beyond just the math that we're talking about here. So how, again, are we positioning ourselves to be in line to be able to do this ourselves? Because again, last year this time, we were in the same conversations about, they've started this process, we are getting our people up to speed, we are using this as an opportunity to train our people, to be able to use their instruments. And again, I'm hearing some similar, you know, pieces here. So my question again is, is how does, how will this move our students, is the question?
Well, I think it moves our students by first giving them multiple opportunities, seven opportunities to assess online, which is something that we've not done in the past. We know that many of, there's some statistical data that shows that students, just by not, just not having familiarity with the device, with testing online. So we have seven, we'll have seven opportunities on top of the other, the two benchmark tests. So that will help our students as well. They'll be, they'll have items that mirror the kind of items that we'll see on state assessment. We will have just a variety of items that our teachers will be able to pull from. And so we think that as a part of our plan for instructional improvement, we think that this will benefit us. We know that this will benefit us.
Okay, okay, because, you know, not to belabor what my colleagues already talked about, we need to, so weing ourselves off of these consultants, particularly based on where we are. If we're using this just as a test bank situation, then that's another kind of, you know, still trying to...
Well, that's exactly what, that's exactly what it is. It's a test bank.
Okay.
It's a test bank, and then they provide the platform for our students to be able to test.
Okay, okay, okay. So thank you so much for the explanation. Then I was a little bit plain for O'Leary, you know, that we're just getting some test bank questions. Okay, so again, how does this align our curriculum area, or this instructional management piece, to get into a, to get into a space where we're able to develop our own test bank?
Well, again, the developing of test bank is a totally different, you know, that's a very, very intensive process. But what we're doing right now, as we, actually, the curriculum department is providing, they're developing blueprints right now, this week, to provide to the company. So we don't, they don't just give us the test. We provide the blueprints from our curriculum office. Our curriculum office develops the blueprints, provides them to Dr. Sarge's, to the, Dr. Sarge's office. He will provide them to the company. They will build a test from the blueprints that we provide.
Okay.
So they just deliver a service. They have the assessments, and they have the mechanism for us to test.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
All right, any other questions, colleagues? Okay, now we have, for more questions, it would be item L.
Of course, this is approval for extension to work with Tri-K as we complete the grant-writing process with SIG. I do want to note that in the initial contract, we contracted for Dr. McCullough to write three grants, two identified by JPS, and one identified by her company. I'm proud to say that we exceeded that and that we did submit six grants by June the 30th dealing in the area of STEM. The SIG grant was an add-on that became available in that timeframe that we contracted with her. So I am proud to say that we did meet that expectation. We set out to write three grants, and we did submit six in the area of STEM and STEAM.
And we're not, and with this extension, it's kind of like we did with Bailey. It's not for additional dollars. It's just so that she could, that the company will be contracted with us through the submission, because currently, they are not. The contract ended on June 30th. So in order for us to kind of see the grants through, we need to extend, we're requesting that we extend the contract. No additional dollars outside of what was in the initial contract. Just extend the time period.
Okay, question?
Well, I was gonna ask, just for confirmation, is this the same group that was late to get the deadline for the SIG grant the first time around?
This is, but let me explain the process. They will deliver the grant to the district, and the district will. The district is responsible. We will submit the grant before the term deadline this time.
Was that the process last time?
Yes, yes, that was the process. That was, that was the process before.
And so... Will this, whether we vote on this or not, or say we don't vote in favor of it, will that affect us being able to get the SIG grant in that's sitting right here?
Yes, yes, sir. They are, it will, because they are, they are working on the grant. We, and we, again, two months ago, when we, when we talked about this in the board meeting, we said then that we would, we would submit again, that we would be working with the company to make sure that we put the grants in, we got the grants ready for submission, for this submission, and that's what we've done. this submission, and that's what we've done. They've worked diligently, you know, we're not excusing that they missed the last one, but again, the initial contract was not to write SIG grants. The initial contract was for the company to write no less than three grants, correct?
Correct.
And again, they did fulfill, we requested as a district, because this became available after we had entered into the relationship, that the SIG was available, and we wanted them to write, to support us with that as well. So they've delivered six grants, which we feel, you know, confident that, we're hopeful that will be funded on top of these four grants. So there is a total of 10 grants, and we are asking that we extend the time period so that we can see this through submission on August the 24th.
I have a question. We're already contractually bound to the 3% commission based off of the works that's
You would have been, but the contract actually expired June 30th, and I believe, Ms. Miller can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the invoices have been paid on that particular contract, for the work that was done under the former contract that expired in June.
And so, the work that's already taken place rendered grants, and those commissions have been paid on those grants?
No commissions.
Not the commissions, not the 3%.
So are we already bound on the commission, in terms of commission, on the work that's been done? So we turn these grants in, if we are granted them, then we're already bound to that commission?
I would think so. Because if we get the grants, because the grants have been signed, if the grants...
Not these.
Not these. Are we speaking of these current ones, are the ones that we pay?
The four.
The four.
That already have been submitted. The ones that have already been submitted, that we're still awaiting funding and awarding on, that I would, those were the ones that we are still obligated to the 3%. So there are already, as my understanding, four that are gone, that we're waiting, six that are gone, that we're waiting for awarding. If we award them, they were awarded prior to the end of the contract, so that 3% would still stand for those.
Okay. Any other questions about these?
Okay. These particular ones, under this particular contract?
Yes.
Right, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
No, I don't think you would be bound for these, under this particular contract, that's on the agenda tonight.
So for clarity purposes, the four that we got in these binders, we still have some opportunity to look back at those, that compensation, is that correct?
Yes. If those are on the, included in the contract for tonight, you would have some room, I would think.
Okay. Questions?
Come on, Ms. Johnson. So, but this work was done under a contract, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And this is sort of a renewal of that contract that this work was done under?
I'm not sure about that.
I'll try to address where there seems to be some confusion. There was a prior contract, that work, as I stated, I'll give you my opinion on this, the grants that were submitted under that contract that the district was obligated under are all in place, and so if those grants were awarded, that commission would be owed. With regard to the grants that would be under the current contract, because that was not included, I would think that we would not have to do it unless the board awards this contract. Apparently, what happened, however, is that because of a short, I guess, submission timeline, and because the board didn't have a quorum, apparently the consultant went on and was doing some work, I'm just, yeah, in contemplation of this. So there is, I guess, what I would say, an equitable issue that the board might want to take into account, because apparently that was going on. But if you're asking me, does the contract, are you currently, right now, obligated to pay that commission, I would say if it's under a contract that was expired, the answer would be no, although that doesn't mean the consultant wouldn't come and try to make some sort of, you know, quantum merited equitable argument of that sort of nature. So I think the board, as Ms. Simms said, the board has some wiggle room in terms of what you want to do, but because that consultant has been working, that is a potential issue that we might have to deal with if the board decides not to go forward with it.
Thank you.
Okay, colleagues, I guess we have, do we need any more discussion on this particular one, L?
Well, my only point is, I don't know if, I'm fine with extending them for no cost for this, to finish this work, but I'd be really uncomfortable if they came in front of us again, having done a late submission the first time around. And I, you know, whoever's fault that is, I'm not sure, it's not, I'm not sure if it'll ever really be clear, but since this is a no-cost extension, essentially, I'm fine with that.
But there's two aspects of it, it's some, I think there's their work, and then there's a commission, so there's, there's two components to it, if I'm correct? Okay, so...
Yeah, what the, what the contract initially said, and we corrected that in legal, was that there was no additional compensation, so in terms of for the work that was being done, I think, to put together the grant, you're not paying any additional funds for that, but if you check the exhibit, the exhibit did provide that if the grant was awarded, there's a commission. So no compensation is a little bit of a misnomer, and we've corrected that in the document that would be signed, if y'all actually decide to approve that.
Which is typical with grant writing.
Okay.
I have no further question on that, but I did realize I have to recuse myself of item C when we vote on it.
Item C?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, now, okay, let's see how we're going to do this now. Okay, colleagues, do we still need to pull D, F, let's see, no, I'm sorry, D, I, K, and L? Do you want to vote on those separately?
And C, because I have to recuse myself.
And C. Are there any others? Okay, with that said, I'll hear a motion for the other items, and then we'll vote.
Some move.
Second.
Has been moved, and second, we're going to vote on A, B, E, F, G, H, J, and M. Correct?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. Now we'll go back to item C. Can I get a motion?
Second.
All right, all right, we'll vote for item C. All in favor? Okay. Give Mr. Oppenheimer a clap.
Sorry, lady.
No problem. All right, now we're ready to vote for item D. Can I get a motion?
Some move.
I'll second it. We're ready to vote on item D. All in favor, raise your hand. All right, thank you. Now we're ready for item I.
Item I, my name is...
With the exception of pulling policy B, I.
BA.
BA, I'm sorry, BA. We're pulling BA of item I. Can I get a motion?
Some move.
Second.
All right, we're ready to vote. All in favor? Very good. Can I get a motion for item K?
Some move.
Second. We're ready to vote. All in favor? Okay, we got two abstentions, and two in favor. That passes. Okay? It passes. All right, now we're moving to item L. Can I get a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Ready to vote. All in favor? Okay. All right, that concludes our, that concludes our consent agenda, consent agenda items general. Now we move to consent agenda items personnel. Do you all want to take these separately or discuss?
There's one that I'm going to pull.
Items for pulling, okay?
I apologize, I didn't have it handy, okay.
It's a long list.
It's the one that we missed last year, it's the supplement, the supplement for principal.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Just know which one it is.
I don't know that number.
Okay, let me look for it.
There's the one that we should have done in July, and then there's this one, so my...
Yeah, it's only July.
It's only July?
Maybe if you describe what it is that you're thinking, they might know.
We've had a lot of people over the last month, so we got to go through and find them.
Just a piece about the supplement.
Supplement for principals?
Yes.
You know, coaches, principals?
What was the question?
The item both were on separately.
We want to vote on separately?
Yes, H.
H.
Okay, thank you.
Would that have to be exactly...
Is that for AH, July 20th, H?
I'm not sure.
July?
July 20th, 2017, H.
Okay. Is there anything else that needs to be pulled? Okay. All right, can I get a motion on the floor, please?
Some move.
No, no, I got it.
So we're going to vote on item A and B, with the exception of July 20th, 2017, item H. Can I get a motion on the floor, please?
Some move.
All right, we're ready to vote for item A and B, with the exception of item H. Raise your hand if you support it. All right, thank you. Now we go to item H of July 20th. Questions?
Yeah, sure. How, which budget line item would this come from? So, district maintenance?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. And is, I guess the other question, is there a similar program, or similar opportunity for teachers to fall into that category?
Yeah, well, teachers receive supplements, there are a variety of, lead teachers receive supplements, so yes, that is, that's a practice.
So they would actually be coaching, mentoring?
Well, they are, yes, we do have, lead teachers do receive a supplement, just similar to this.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion, please?
Some move.
Second.
All right, we're ready to vote. All in favor? Three? You abstaining?
Both of them, yes, nay.
Nay. Mr. Jones. All right, thank you. Now we're down, we're down to other business. Other business, Mr. Oppenheimer?
Yes, ma'am, I sent a note, maybe yesterday or the day before, hoping that we could discuss what's going to, what's going to be our approach towards the legislative desires that we have as a district, board elections, and then the student representation policy, which we have a tight deadline on. So, I don't know if you just want me to start going, but...
Let's take them one at a time.
Yeah, yeah, so I sent a note, Ms. Johnson, I think this was before you were appointed, about trying to gather information from my colleagues. I think I was prompted when we got the thing from MSBA, which asked what we thought our legislative priorities would be, but I think it'd be really helpful to get on this early, given that I think this is something that tends to fall by the wayside in terms of getting our local delegation together, but then also city, you know, officials and whatnot. So what I would propose is that we have some kind of a subcommittee that kind of prioritizes the legislative agenda for the district, with obviously input from Dr. Murray, and that we kind of take the lead to gather our local municipal and state legislatures together to kind of, you know, have a discussion about what our asks would be as a district.
I agree with you, Dr. Mr. Oppenheimer, we do need to, a part of our, being aggressive in what we need to do here in Jackson, we need to gather as much support locally, our politicians and community, to support our agenda. So I will, in light of, we have four committee members, we have to spread ourselves a little bit across the board, so would you have that?
Yeah.
Particular committee? And is there anybody else that would like to serve with you? I'll let you volunteer.
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Jones and Mr. Oppenheimer, would you all work on the legislative priority along with Dr. Murray and his executive staff?
Yeah, absolutely. Given that the legislature has passed laws each of the last three or four years that have had a direct impact on our district.
Absolutely, and our funds, our funds, and they're not hearing us enough.
Well, it definitely goes beyond funds, but yeah, for sure.
Absolutely.
So the next thing I was, maybe I'll skip to the student representation, you know, we passed a policy, you know, thankfully, and colleagues, to have student representation to the school board, and I know for this initial year, we were promised to have an election by, before Labor Day, and so I think it'd be great to know as soon as possible what the process, I know colleagues, we kind of have to assign ourselves to the seven high schools to kind of go and do information sessions, but I'd imagine what would be a good procedure, obviously, you know, in consultation with you, Dr. Murray, and your area superintendents, would be within the next week or two for us to have already posted something so that students who are interested will know that there's an information session at their high school, and then we're spreading out to be able to go to those high schools, to have those information sessions with them, so that by the time Labor Day comes around, that there's a fruitful election that obviously is in the hands of the school itself. I don't know if you had any...
Yes, sir, well, we have a, we have a leadership meeting on Friday, and so we'll, we'll kind of plan out the process with your, with the timeline that you sent me in place. So we've discussed it, and we'll kind of complete that process on Friday in our meeting, and communicate with you, with the board members.
Would you need one of us there, or no?
Well, I mean, you're welcome to attend, but again, this is the, this is just the process for voting, right?
Yeah, well, yeah.
So what we'll do is, once we kind of come up with a process, then you and I can sit down. We'll do that.
That'd be great. There were some beautiful posters, which I...
Yeah, it was really nice, real nice. Did you create those?
No, 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 one of our students created it. And then the last note I had was about board elections, given, given the turnover and whatnot, and so I was going to propose to my colleagues that we wait until the other three appointments are made, and then, kind of like I proposed back in June, have an election at that point. And so, um, I was gonna propose to my colleagues that we wait until the other three appointments are made and then, kind of like I proposed back in June, have an election at that point, maybe two meetings into their new time on the, on the board, once we're fully, um, here. And I don't know, I just kind of wanted to open that up for discussion.
Hey, if I...
Let me have a question. Has there been any word from the, uh, administration on what their timeline is for?
Not that I've gotten, but when I called and spoke to them initially, it was really about getting our fourth board member, Ms. Johnson's slot filled. Um, I will have a follow-up conversation to see if they can give me any information I can provide to you on subsequent appointments.
And if I'm, I have a meeting this week, uh, so I'll follow up this week.
Okay, so we'll just, um, hold the offices that we have currently until more members and they'll have an opportunity to select. And, um, M- MSBA said that they will also come in and do some subsequent training because new board member training is not until January of 2018. So there's a period of time that they'll just be brand new. So we'll, we'll proceed with that with new information from the city. Any other, um, business? Okay, um, one other thing, I think, Mrs. Turner has, uh, made mention that we do need to get our superintendent's evaluations complete and we need to give her a date, um, as to when we can get those to her, so she can compile them. Has everybody met with you, Dr. Murray, already?
Yes, with the, well, yes.
Okay. All the current ones, and then we got Ms. Johnson. Okay, and lastly, we do need to determine, um, with Mississippi School Board Association, the date of their strategic planning. And lastly, uh, there was, sounds like it was one more thing here. Maybe that's it.
We also need to decide next week.
That's what it is, that's what it is. Okay, um, we'll take a recommendation from the administration. Uh, we are scheduled to have our regular board meeting on next Tuesday. So that just gives us one week. So we need to hear from you all as to where you need to be and where we are and what we need to do.
I can't do the 22nd.
Another Tuesday.
Because it's another Thursday.
It's the 29th.
Well, but we would have a scheduled board meeting that next Tuesday.
It's the 29th, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, exactly. We could, yeah, we could do a Thursday, because there is another Tuesday. Well, Turner has a conflict on the 22nd, there's the 29th, but that will put us back in the same situation with a, a board meeting, uh, the next week. So if we did a Thursday again, we could do the 24th, if that's, uh...
I don't have a problem with the 24th. You do?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. What's that, 24?
I might have to call in, but if that's what works for everybody else, I can do that while I'm on the road.
All right.
So, Ms. Williams.
Okay, so we'll do, our next board meeting will be here in the boardroom on August the 24th at 5:30. Okay, um, Ms. Turner and Mrs. Shepherd, do we have anything to talk or discuss about for executive session?
I don't.
But it's Ms. Johnson's first meeting, don't we?
Baptized by fire.
All right then, well, uh, with that said, we want to thank all of our community supporters and executive staff for supporting us on tonight. And we want those kids to get back into school, get back in the bed, so they can get up and rise and shine and be great scholars on tomorrow. So with that said, do I hit the gavel?
Okay.
Meeting adjourned.